Welcome, on this overcast and rainy day, to the City Council Work Session for November 21st. And I suppose we could all start out this meeting by wishing the general public a happy Thanksgiving. It's just around the corner. Or around the clock.
Around the clock, yeah.
Alrighty, so we have some important work to do today. Working on the homeless winter strategies and trying to get that moving, so because winter's upon us. So, let's dig into this and get the work done. The manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just turn it over to Michael to move us through this conversation. Okay, last night, Council should have received an email from Sarah. I'll be basically outlining that and pushing for our recommendation. On our October 31st meeting and following discussion with local homeless service providers, staff presented six winter strategies that would complement existing services and address some of the increased need our community is experiencing. These original six included an expansion of the car camping program, homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing, expansion of storage capacity, an expansion for Looking Glass Station 7 for youth, a triage or service coordinator that would work in between the agencies to help sort referrals, and an emergency MASH-style tent. Following last week's panel discussion, an additional strategy of family transitional shelter units was added to the list of possible strategies. Consideration was given to these, and priorities expressed during the Council's discussion, and priority was given to the timing that we'd be able to turn around these strategies. The following three items are recommended for immediate action. These include the car camping program expansion for $50,000, funding for homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing at another $50,000, and expansion of storage capacity for $10,000. Three additional items that would need some additional refinement before they can be implemented, but are strategies that Council and the panel supported, staff is also pursuing. That includes transitional family housing units for $25,000, the Looking Glass Station 7 expansion for $17,000, and the triage service coordinator for $35,000. Staff does not recommend moving forward with implementation of an emergency MASH-style tent. This is an idea that should continue to be explored, but siting options will make it a challenge, if not impossible, to open this winter. We recommend that Council authorize the city manager to spend up to $200,000 in marginal beginning working capital to implement these items. Since many of these items are ongoing and not a one-time need, we will need to discuss how we either incorporate them into the fiscal 2014 budget strategies or identify an alternative source of funding.
So, I'll just start out here by, I support all, I support these. I'm curious about, can you remind me what the Looking Glass Station 7 expansion includes?
That would increase their staffing capacity. They have some units that are not being used due to a lack of staffing. That would allow them to increase their staffing to house two or three additional youth and a potential for a mother with child.
And in terms of this, what I read on this email from Sarah, it talked about Shelter Care is launching a campaign to raise funds for two additional City of Eugene units. Are those, like, single housing units we're talking about there?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, those are family transitional housing units.
So, that would take care of two families, potentially?
At its minimal. Throughout a year, that could help up to six families, though.
Okay, and I wasn't sure I was interpreting this correctly. So, they, are we providing the money that would be matched by others? Is that what this is asking for? So, we would come up with $25,000 and then we would participate in a possible campaign to get matching community?
They have, they have a match campaign. They have identified a match donor who's willing to put in $25,000 of match. And we would be helping them meet that match goal.
Oh, that's the opposite of what I think I was saying. I was asking if we were the basic 25, but they've got the basic 25, so we're one match.
Yes.
And they're looking for another match, or is that, do it all?
Well, we would contribute towards that match of the original $25,000, so, up to $25,000.
Okay. All right. The other thing that bothers me, I must admit, and I understand why you're saying it, I just, it's not acceptable to me, is the, I don't know that the MASH-style tent is the right idea, but I don't know how we're going to address the possibility of an impending winter crisis. Suppose we have three weeks of snow here and we've got hundreds of people that there's no place for. I understand what the problem is here, but I just can't see that if it happens, we're going to have to have a, we're going to have to have some kind of emergency plan in place to, either us or somebody has to have some way of dealing with those folks. And we've heard from both St. Vinnie's and that they don't have enough, and the Mission, that they don't have enough space for that. So, I guess, I would say that this particular part of, we can't get it done, is just not going to, from my point of view, isn't going to cut it. I just don't know what we do, but I, we're going to have to come up with some emergency strategy of some kind in case we find ourselves in a position where people really do need to be sheltered. I don't know what the rest of Council thinks about that. It'd be interesting hearing your thoughts and comments, but that's my thinking. George?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I share your thoughts exactly. And you answered, or your questions matched some of mine, so I don't need to re-ask them. Yeah, we, I mean, I guess my question would be, I'm looking, you know, we heard from the service providers at our last meeting that there's, there's not enough capacity for, in the Egan Warming Centers that are being, that are funded now, to handle the expected increase. And it sounded like that was anywhere from 100 to 150 people. As I recall, I think I remember Terry McDonald's figures correctly. So, and I don't see that addressed on this list of, these are all good things. I'm not, I support all of these. But I, I don't see that the Egan Warming Center is increasing that capacity on this list, so I'm wondering what staff's thinking on that.
Right, I can address that. I mean, we'll continue to work with all of the providers on the Egan Warming Strategy. We just haven't, I think what the providers said last week is they're looking for places. The problem with the MASH-style tent is it falls into a lot of the same category as the Village Conversation has been, which is taking something like that, while you might own the tent and have the infrastructure, you can't just place it anywhere without going through some process. And I think, I was getting head nods from Terry on the panel last week, that he also doesn't think he can implement that for this winter. So, I think we need to continue working on helping identify locations for the Egan. But, and we can bring that back. If there's one that comes up and it says, hey, we need funding, or we won't be able to get it open, we can bring that back. We just haven't gotten that far in the conversation with them.
I remember last year, there was conversation with the county about using the Wheeler Pavilion at the Fairground Site. And I'm wondering if, have you been talking to the county? I mean, that seemed like a plausible place to site, to have an Egan Warming Center. Were there problems that maybe I'm not aware of with that site?
It's a possibility. Remember, with the Wheeler Pavilion, it also costs those 15-plus thousand dollars to do that. And so, I think part of the conversation eventually is going to be is how much money do you want to put towards the effort? We do want to continue to support and enhance the Egan Warming Centers. Those got started a few years ago, really with the intent of providing a safe place for people to be on the coldest of nights as we work through the winter. So, I think we want to continue to support that. I think ultimately, if the Council wants us to sort of shift a little bit into a different model in which we take on the Egan Warming Centers and find those and implement those, which we sure can, we'll just need to figure out how to also fund those as we move through that.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, the Egan Warming Centers are wonderful, but they're only on the freezing night, so, but really, if you're, if you're out sleeping outside and it's 35 degrees, it's not 32 degrees, there's really very little difference if you're out in that kind of weather. I've never experienced it as a homeless person, but I've been out camping in the woods and, you know, when it's like that and you don't have a shelter, it's pretty awful. So, I really think we need, you know, we, I feel like we dropped the ball last winter on that. And when the Washington-Jefferson, you know, bridge in Camp was disbanded, we promised that we would have those centers open, and we didn't. And so, and I think we seem to be drifting into that position again this winter, for whatever reason. And I just hate to see that happen. But all these other, I have, I do have a question about the service coordinator and the $35,000 for that position. I'm just wondering, you know, about the necessity of that position.
I think there's agreement among some of the agencies that having some kind of person who can kind of work in between agencies and send direct referrals based on the client's needs would be helpful. It is an item that we are looking to continue to hash out some more of the details on. It's not one of the three immediate we could turn around right away, but it is something that we felt like there was some momentum behind.
Okay, well, I, just as a businessperson, I mean, I look at this and I see $50,000 for car camping, $50,000 for the rapid rehousing. Those are both great. Expansion of storage, that's 110, then the 25,000, that's 135,000. And so, service coordinator for 35,000, that's like 33% administration.
You want to answer that before? I'm sorry, didn't mean to, I'm.
I don't think I need another round. I just, I, this seems like an awful lot of money for administration for really not a lot of money being directed at the problem.
That was just the number that was given to us by St. Vincent de Paul to add in a staff person for that position.
Oh, I've got Claire and Alan in the queue. Claire?
Well, that was one of my questions, too, was who would employ this coordinator?
It would be through St. Vincent de Paul.
With funding that came from the City of Eugene?
Correct.
And would they add any other funding to that position? Would our funding be the sole?
I don't know what they would leverage. I believe ours would be the majority of funding.
I mean, I also kind of share Counselor Brown's questioning of that particular piece. Not that coordination isn't needed, but I don't know if housing it in one particular agency, when we have the Human Services Commission, which has staff, that's sometimes their function. There's also a coordinated data entry system that they're implementing now that is supposed to be supporting them and giving referrals in a more immediate way. So, it's the one-door entry policy for anyone needing services. They don't have to go to multiple agencies. But I don't know how far along they are in implementing that. So, I don't know if you could, if you have any.
We've been working with them on that as well. I think the reason why this is on the second tier is for exactly these reasons. We're not sure if we'll be able to get all the details and figure out how to implement it, if it will be the right bang for the buck for this year's winter strategy. But we had previously gotten direction from you that you liked all six items. And so, we want to at least authorize the city manager up to a certain amount to implement if it's something that we all feel like, yep, this is going to help house people through the winter and we feel like it will really push that farther. If not, we can certainly not spend the money or redirect it to something else.
Well, I mean, I appreciate how thoughtful you guys are being with this and your coordination with the service providers. But I would lean towards using that money if we did need to find some emergency shelter to bolster either Egan Warming or set up our own emergency shelter, that that funding might be better put towards that kind of usage for an immediate relief for folks who might be finding themselves on the street in the cold. Do we think that if we were able to identify another site for an Egan Warming location, have the coordinators of that program indicated they'd be able to get the staff and volunteers to manage that?
We haven't had those conversations so far. It's something worth pursuing. Last year, and in a short time, with the closing of the Washington-Jefferson camp, or, that was difficult. If we had a little bit more time to coordinate, it's something that would just allow us more time to figure that out.
Yeah, I think that if, if the Egan Warming Center organizers think they're capable of providing the volunteer support for another site, then I strongly encourage city staff to be working to try to identify one that we might be able to support. I've also heard folks mention the idea, and I don't know how I feel about it, but the idea of using City Hall as an emergency shelter. We vacated it partly due to safety concerns, so I have an issue around that. But it is an empty building that is in the city's control. So, I don't know how deeply anyone's thought about that. I know it has some downsides, for sure, but it is sitting there empty. I think that's all I have for right now.
I just want to remind people that it's, it's empty. It's also not heated, so that's just one concern.
Yeah. Alan?
I was out of town last week and, at my hotel room, I got a USA Today. And it has a national breakdown by state. And the one in Oregon was about this issue. And it was that the city council is looking at a village for homelessness. So, it's getting national attention, anyway. I support all six of these. I think they're all worthy. I have a question about how this moves forward. The two additional items that need further refinement, can we approve those and then for you to go to the next step? And then you bring back the details and we approve that? Or how are you thinking you would do that?
I was assuming that if you authorized the city manager to spend up to $200,000, that that was, if we can work it out, we just make it happen. If you would want us to bring back the details, even in a memo form or email, we're happy to do that, too.
Yeah, I would like to see them. I don't necessarily think we need to approve them, but I would be in favor of moving them forward. On the, how long would it take, do you think, to implement these last two things? A few additional items?
Were these, sorry, my list might be different than yours. Looking Glass. Looking Glass, I think Looking Glass would be relatively quick. Service Coordinator, as we said, we'd need to work out some more details and coordinate with HSC. So, it all depends on how fast we can get those details together. I don't really have a timeline for those two.
Would the service coordinator, is that envisioned to be a full-time position at 35,000?
I believe so, yeah.
So, one of the things I've learned, being on the Service Commission for many years, is that things don't get done unless there's someone to do them. And there is so much need in this area, especially around housing and the homelessness, especially during the winter, that adding all this stuff to someone else's already overfull plate that works in this area that are woefully underfunded. These people make very low wages, relatively speaking. Just add another thing that they'd have to do and likely not get done. And I would suspect that this position would do more than just implement these things. So, the overhead isn't really fair comparison to say, you know, these programs cost $35,000 to implement. I don't think that's the right, that's the right equation. I think it's more than that. There's a lot of stuff to be done, a lot that needs to occur, and so much need and so little staffing at this point. So, I'm supportive of that, moving it forward. On the Egan Warming Center, what we heard was highest number ever, potentially, already seeing more than we saw last year by a long shot, potentially way over capacity. And is there a chance of expanding the capacity at Egan, duplicating it? If not, then I agree with the mayor that the, that this is a need. If we run into a tough winter, this year more than any, I think, we're in a lot of trouble, if that's so. And then finally, you can answer that, but one more point before my timer runs out. I support Claire's request for the restroom for the Occupy Medical Clinic. Just about which facilities would it be and what would that cost? Is that on Sundays?
I think Michael's prepared to talk about that if we're, if you want to move on to that.
We can talk about that.
Can you answer the question about Egan, though?
Yeah, I don't know what.
Yeah, well, Egan, that would require some talks with Egan. It's not a city program, per se, so it's hard to make guesses of what their capacity is or what their capacity is to expand. So, we'd have to pursue those talks with Egan itself.
Location, space.
Right. Related to restrooms, I called the service today just to explore what those costs would be for a one-day unit. You know, some issues involved, how long would the unit stay there? And security issues with locking it or if we keep it accessible 24 hours. The cost per day would be, if we were to have it removed after a day and returned each week, it's a $30 drop-off fee, $100 for ADA a unit. And then, if it were to be picked up on Sundays, it's difficult for them to schedule because they usually don't have drivers out, so it would require overtime. That could be up to $70. Otherwise, if we were to leave it there until Monday, there would be no additional cost. But that would just require it being unmanned overnight.
About $130 a day. And it's on Sundays.
On Sundays, yep.
Clarification on that, $130 a day, would that be the ADA unit?
Yes.
Okay. I agree with the mayor regarding the urgency of providing emergency shelter and finding some way to do it. I think whatever we can do to have the talks, Michael, with the providers regarding the warming centers, I think moving forward as quickly as that, that may be the most expeditious thing that we could do and also the best, what the best, as Sarah put it, bang for a dollar regarding, regarding the immediate and urgent need that we potentially could, that we could meet this winter. So, I guess the question there, then, Michael, is if we were to begin to have those discussions with the providers, how soon could we hope for an answer on that?
That's also depending on the providers. I could begin conversations with them as quickly as next week.
And then to put it in perspective, mind, it would take identifying a place. It would be identifying staff and volunteers to operate it on a moment's notice or on whatever, however many hours' notice. And it would also require some funding at some level. The funding, would that, is that something that the city would be asked to provide?
I think it's safe to assume that, if we're.
I would assume so, negotiating with them, yes. Do we have a number as far as funding? If, what I'd like to hear is, is what kind of discussion are we going to have with the providers? How much would it take? Are there sites potentially that are available? And how much would it cost? And I'd like to hear that within three hours. Actually, I say that tongue-in-cheek, but if, you know, it really is that urgent.
Thanksgiving, it sounds better.
But it, you know, it is urgent. If there's something I personally could do to help facilitate the conversation with providers, I would, I'll devote whatever time necessary to that. But, you know, if we could step forward that and identify if it can be done, it seems to me that it would be, in terms of some of the other things that we're considering, it's a relatively small impact as far as, as far as the outlay, the three different kinds of outlay that I did discuss. And whereas it may be easy for me to say, well, it's easy to find volunteers. You know, volunteers are certainly out there. And this is a pretty high-profile, pretty high-profile issue that we're dealing with. So, if we could step forward that pretty quickly, that would help ease my anxiety a little bit regarding what we're going to do for this winter. I have talked to Sarah about I-3 zoning and different things. We'll discuss that at a different time. But I support what the staff is doing, with the exception of what I've just pointed out, that if we can get something going, identifying a place, and then find the volunteers and staff and the funding necessary. Additionally, for $140 a day, is that the number that was out for an ADA?
$130.
$130.
$130. I, you know, I certainly support that and would like to identify a place to fund that. Because that is, that's a pretty good service that's being provided at no public cost, really, at this point. Thank you.
I just want to make sure on the Egan Warming Center, are we talking about capacity just during the time it's less than 32 degrees? Or is it every night through the winter?
Just the 32 degrees is what I'm looking at, John. Now, if we could do it beyond that, you know, that's a different conversation. But for the current criteria that exists surrounding opening the centers.
One, and I don't know what the solution is. One option would be is you increase the $200,000 to whatever you're comfortable with, dollar-wise. And we go try to figure out how to make that happen within those dollars. If we can, we'll move forward. If we can't, we will come back, which is a little bit different than doing the work, coming back within, you know, you have about two meetings left. So, I'm a little bit concerned around timing on some things. So, that would be one option, is to up that number. By the end of the meeting, I will.
Mike, and then Chris, and then, Denny.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. I, I think that I'm pleased with staff's work here and happy to support the specifics that are here. I think that these are things we can do and should do and must do in front of what, as Alan mentioned, is probably going to be great demand this year for some help. So, I think it's right and good that we're doing this. I wonder, though, we have quite an asset that I wonder with this particular issue, how well, and I honestly don't know from a staff perspective, how well we partner and work with, and that's with the University of Oregon. I wonder with the opportunity for volunteers who I'm sure would willingly serve in the student body, and with the facilities and assets that are in use and some for only part of the year, how closely do we work with the university on issues like this? And with their staff specifically, with the administration, to coordinate?
On this particular issue, I don't know if we've had any particular conversations or coordination with them on this particular issue.
Okay, I would encourage it. I would say that there's probably a great many students willing and would very much enjoy the opportunity to serve and to help in this kind of effort. But certainly, they have opportunity to assist as well with resources that may be helpful. And I think that to further our town-gown relationship, as the mayor's always fond of saying, and I agree with, this is an issue where we could probably build a stronger partnership. I have one other question. It's the, the school district through their board, 4J, wrote us a letter making a request for removing a site. Are we acting on that today?
Not, I have no plans to do so.
Okay.
We hadn't brought it today for your consideration.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Chris?
Thank you. I appreciate where the conversation's been going, and I can support the six options. I would probably reinforce what Alan was saying about the coordinator. I mean, it may seem like a lot of money, but it is. In my conversations with Terry, he is overloaded. And it would be very hard for him to be able to provide an effective level of coordination without having somebody who could kind of provide that function. I mean, everybody understands it, that you need people to make things happen. If you build it, they won't come. You have to actually operate it. Which also leads to the discussion regarding warming solutions for this winter. I agree with everyone else, we need to have something, and we need to figure out what that is. I don't know what the comfort level is around the additional money, and maybe having an idea would be helpful. And I do think that we need to be able to address that issue this winter. Something, though, that occurs to me, in that addition to a location, if you're talking about people, even if they are volunteers, having been involved in emergency kind of sheltering situations, you can't just send out the call for volunteers. They all show up and we all do this wonderful thing together. There is a significant training obligation you require for people who are going to run emergency shelters, or shelters of any kind. You don't just come in and sit down and run it. There are things that need to be done, logistics that need to be managed. There's a lot of organizational things that require trained people to do. St. Vincent de Paul and the others know how to provide that training. There is a training component that's part of the Egan Warming Center's curriculum. But if we want to have volunteers involved, they are going to need to be trained in how to administer that program. Otherwise, you will have problems. And the first year of the Egan Warming Center, they did experience some problems, which is what led to some modifications in the program to address those. And you're dealing with a population that, the more you have trained volunteers working with them, the better the outcome is going to be. So, it's very important that you, that you start that process early. You can't just say, let's pitch a tent, get some volunteers, and everything will be great. It needs a lot more than that. So, being thoughtful about it, I think, will be helpful. thoughtful about it, I think, will be helpful, but it doesn't diminish the fact that we need to start being thoughtful right now, because we need to put something in place. So if, if you can come up with a proposal, I think that would be very helpful.
Thank you. I think there has been a lot of training done already, and that probably, probably there are trained people ready to work. I don't, don't know for sure, but I have reservations about this coordinator position. And I have a question, what's, what's happening with Opportunity Village? Are we dropping it?
No. In fact, we had a piece of information, pretty good site analysis of the five sites. It was in your packet last week. One of the things we were going to close with was, if you want to continue to narrow that list, pick a site, have future discussion, we could come on your December 10th meeting, probably at the 7:30 session, unless, unless there's time earlier that it shortens up. So we'd be prepared.
We're not picking a site today?
No.
Seems that time is running out, sort of. I certainly support the restroom for downtown, but I was wondering, couldn't, they have two new ones here, this building, could this, could we ask the county to leave the front door open? And I think the other parts of the building could be locked off. That might be, that might be better than, than a porta-potty. But there are, those were built recently, weren't they, the two out there? Weren't they built recently?
I think they were part of the remodel, but I'm not certain of that.
Two, I know they, they used to not be there. And maybe they could, maybe people could use those. And I, are you going, are we going to continue leaving the restrooms in Amazon Park open? They are locked open currently, and I think that's a good thing.
We can check, I don't know.
But I know there are people sleeping there who, and the, it's just, the doors are apparently open all the time, which is, and when, when, they'll still be needed when it gets colder. I know. Also, another thing I've noticed at Amazon Park on my early morning walks is recreation vehicles, which are empty. And just parked there, and I wonder if people could sleep in those.
We can check on that. I would suggest that there would be significant liability with that, but.
Why?
We'd be happy to check into it and...
I just, I'm sure there are vehicles all over town that are owned by the city. And if someone could crawl into there, in there at night. But I was talking to three people yesterday who sleep outside and don't mind it at all, but they said they look after each other. And, but I think there are times, especially when, like Monday night, when it wouldn't be too good to be sleeping outside. So, so I don't, I don't see six things on this list. I see three, and then two more. Everyone's talking about six.
The paragraph between the two is a...
There's the shelter care.
Shelter care, $25,000.
It's just not bullet.
Those are separate items.
Have you finished, Counselor Taylor?
I'm thinking. I...
Wouldn't want to get in the way of that.
Thank you. I, we're not talking about establishing a commission, are we? That was one of the items originally.
No, we're talking about the winter strategies.
Okay. Thank you, that's all.
Yes, anything you want to say?
$25,000 is the response to Pat's earlier request.
For what?
Well, the, the idea on that would be to try to add capacity to the Egan system for areas in which, during the time which the, the rest of the Egan system is open.
Thank you.
So my concern about this, and I like that the, how councilors responded to this a lot, but my concern is that we really don't own the Egan program. This is a community program that is not a city program. And so I really think that the responsible thing for us to do is to ask them what would allow them to expand their capacity. I happen to know that they still need to train more people, and I happen to know that one of the things that gets in the way of being able to provide more warming center is the need to be able to train more people. So all of that, all of that has to move, and I, I would hate to, for us to jump to the conclusion of what they're, the best answer then might be, when it's not our, it's not our deal to do that. I think we want to be helpful, but I think we should be prudent. And, gosh, I don't ever want to use that word.
I use it all the time.
I was just joking.
And you did.
It's got legs or something, but anyway. But, anyway, I, I just think we need to be careful to, to move along rapidly, but I think we shouldn't put the cart before the horse on this. There may be ways that we can be helpful that we don't even know yet. And so I, I'm all for moving fast, and I'm all for being prepared. And even under this, I think we need to sort of scope out, if we really had some emergency needs, what would, what would we do, which is a different question entirely than Egan Warming Centers, by the way. So both of those things are sort of in play for me.
Mayor, can I just respond, because I, it kind of along the same lines. I think from at least our perspective is that, yes, we'd want to work with the people in the Egan Warming Center, that group, and we don't know exactly what would be helpful for them. What I was hearing a little bit around the table is, if there's 100 to 150 people that need additional services, and this will be good to just verify, that if the Egan Warming Centers don't have the capacity, there's some expectation, we will try to figure out how to meet those capacity, which may be different.
Yeah.
And, and so I think the minimum, potentially, we don't know what that answer is. And that's why I think one, one option would be is to authorize additional dollars. We'll go try to take care of the 100 or 150 people the best that we can. If we can do it, great. If we need to come back, for either more guidance or more dollars, we'll do that. Which is maybe a little bit different than setting out the whole plan and then trying to get approval on a plan that may or may not actually be implementable on the night that everybody's cold. And so that's just, I guess, my work to go.
I also want to say about this service coordinator, I know that when Terry McDonald talked to me about, he said there had been in the past a service coordinator, and they've played a very important role. I'm thinking it might even at that time have come out of shelter care or somewhere, but at any rate, when with cuts, that went away, and that has adversely impacted them being able to get people to the services that are actually out there. So they, so that's what this is about, actually helping people get to where they, to the things that we have available. So I think it's very important, and it's been identified by service providers as one of the things that they think could make the most, the most difference. On the potty issue, here's my question. Is there a place in the downtown which makes it just as convenient as where they're currently doing the medical thing? Is there a place they could put the medical van that's close to an open, an existing restroom, and close to electrical outlet, and so that you don't have to bring something to it, you could bring it to something that already exists without creating any extra inconvenience? And I, I would, I would want to ask you to, to check on that before we make a decision about adding things that might be costly, when we might arrange things in a different way and solve the problem in a, in a practical, practical way.
That's a question we had too, and so we'll explore that. I think if you authorize this, and we come up with that solution, it'll just be money we save.
And I just want to be sure that we don't let it sit around. I just want to be sure that we, we, you act on it, and we know what you've done. That's all. All right, so I'm looking at this list, and I've heard some people have a, have, are not as supportive of the service coordinator, but everybody seems to be supportive of all the other things on the list. Do you need an emotion out there?
Yeah.
Yep. Alan?
I move approval to authorize the city manager to spend up to $225,000 for all six identified strategies, plus a bathroom for Occupy Medical Clinic through the winter, plus expansion of emergency cold weather shelter.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So my question with that motion that you just made, Alan, is if it's possible for us to provide a bathroom without having to go and rent one because we do just what I talked about, is that included in your...
Yeah, I mean, what I, plus a bathroom for Occupy Medical Clinic.
Whatever way we, whatever way we solve.
That's what I'm hearing.
And up to is in there also.
And it says up to 25, $225,000. So whatever we say, we say.
It's still flexible.
All right. George?
I support this motion, and I withdraw my, wasn't even necessarily an injunction, it was just kind of a questioning of the service coordinator. I'm happy after, after hearing the other councillors' remarks, that I think that's probably a good investment. And I would like to, and we don't have to put it in the motion or anything, but I personally would like to see the threshold for use of the Egan Warming type center be lowered significantly to, like around 40 degrees, because I work outside a lot, and I often work into the evening outside. And I'll tell you, on these cold nights, it's, it doesn't have to be 32, you can be miserable at 35, or, or 36, 37, 38. So I, we don't need to dig into that right now. But I just had a couple, just two really quick questions. And city manager said that the relay pavilion was 15,000 for the Egan Warming Center?
Approximately.
Was that for a certain number of nights, or was that for the whole winter? Did they do it like a motel, like you pay so much per night, or?
It was for the night, was it? It was for two nights. It also included, a lot of that included paying staff to manage because they couldn't find the adequate volunteers in time, and a few other transitional services to assist moving from camp.
So that was just for two nights?
Yes.
Wow. Okay. Well, I, you know, I, I agree that City Hall itself should not be used because, first of all, there's the seismic danger, which a lot of people maybe are still not aware of, and then the electricity's been cut off. But I was wondering, what about the fire station component? That's kind of a, it's a separate structure almost, it's not really tied into these column or pairs with no, that don't have any shear wall in between them. It seems like it might be a safer part of the building as far as seismic goes, but it still wouldn't have the electricity.
No heater lights.
We actually have, your next presentation is on City Hall, and so we have facility staff, Mike Pennwell's here, who might be able to answer that question more clearly.
Okay.
We wait till he starts even, because I think some of the issues is not just that we've turned the electricity off, it's that steam is not available to heat the building. So it's not a matter of we can just pay the bill.
Turn it back on. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Claire?
Yeah, well, and part of the reason I, I brought up the City Hall thing is because we have had people mentioning it, and we haven't said why it's not really a viable option. So I think it's important for people to understand that there's no heat and no light, which is something I didn't actually know. So, and then I also support the motion and appreciate it. And I, too, echo what Counselor Brown said about the service coordinator. I'm not necessarily unsupportive of it, but just want to make sure we're really using our dollars in the, the most effective way possible, and getting at the core issue of what we're trying to deal with here. In terms of Counselor Brown's lament at where the threshold is set for opening the Egan Warming Center, is part of the challenge around that, the reason they set it at the lower temperature, is because of capacity, of trying to rally volunteers. If you set it at a lower temperature, you have fewer nights that you open. If you set it at a higher temperature, you're more likely to be open maybe seven days a week, and trying to staff that with volunteers becomes near impossible. So that was kind of the compromise they were trying to reach with that program. And then I also appreciate including the, trying to access a bathroom for Occupy Medical. I think that they are offering an important service, and this is, even if we did put in an ADA-approved unit that was just there on Sundays and picked up on Monday, for three months, that would cost us just over $1,500. So that's pretty inexpensive, and if we needed to open a city bathroom, I would hope we could maintain it for, you know, not much more than that for those time periods. So I definitely support the motion.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo the comments that Claire and, and George have made around the service coordinator position, too. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we have a close look at that. I'd like to offer a friendly amendment after the words $225,000 of, from marginal beginning working capital.
Oh, sure. That's where it was intended. Let me think about that.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote on that. All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. There you go.
Mayor, could I also, I just wanted to get some clarification. I had offered that we could come on the evening of December 10th, probably your 7:30 meeting, and I just wanted to make sure that was something everybody wants to continue the conversation sites. Okay?
Yeah.
Other thing that I want to add to this conversation, because it, we end up dealing with other things, and we don't ever get to this. I think it's important that we make a decision that there's going to be some kind of ongoing committee to deal with homeless issues for the foreseeable future. And I'm not suggesting what that would be constitute at this point, but I, it feels like to me that you could ask our Human Rights Commission to make a recommendation for, not for who would be on it, but what, what it might be constituted of, and who might be around the table, and get the thing started, because we've been, we, it's been a year. And, and so I would really like to, if you want to do, wait to another time, or you want to make a motion, I just think it's, it would be easy to get, you're not talking about how many, you're not talking about who would be on it. You're saying we're charging somebody with at least starting to put together the idea of, of, of what a committee to decide, to decide about the committee might, might be.
Like how to make a recommendation to us?
I just, I think if we give them that responsibility, they're not going to come back making the decision for you. They, they are going to put together a group of people that would come back with a recommendation to council for what that might look like, and who might be part of it. Chris?
I would just quickly add, I think having the Human Rights Commission make a recommendation is great, but I think you would also want to, in parallel, have the Human Services Commission also be involved, because obviously, a lot of the players who are going to be involved in this very important work are the human service agencies and providers. So I think Human Rights Commission can make recommendations, and you could also parallel having Human Services Commission also make a recommendation.
I guess what I was thinking about is that the Human Rights Commission could actually say, we want to put together a committee that would make a recommendation for what that permanent committee might be like. And so they would probably put the Human Services Commission in that, in that first committee to make the recommendations for what the final committee would be like.
Committee to meet on, who's going to be on the committee?
Yeah.
Okay, I got it.
The only thing I would suggest is that we ask the HRC to do that in their December meeting.
The Human Rights Commission?
Yeah, HRC.
Well, it's up to you guys. I, I can't make a motion, so it's up to you.
I make that motion, that we ask the Human Rights Commission, which I am a member, to take that up in the December, December meeting.
In coordination with the Human Services Commission.
In ultimate coordination with the HRC, yeah.
So just moving it along, it's very loosely defined at this juncture.
Fair enough.
Should we vote on our motion? Should we vote on our motion?
I think you should, unless counsel, unless staff has anything they want to say about that. Okay. All right. All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. So maybe we get that.
Who's going to ask them?
From being the budgetary chair.
Pat, we'll, that'll be our responsibility to let them know that.
All righty then. We're ready to move on to, we tried to leave a half hour for the, the City Hall discussion. Thank you all.
Thanks. Thanksgiving.
You, too.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Mayor, Council today, I appreciate you putting this item on your agenda today with such, such short notice. As you know, our last meeting with you was November 14th, and at that meeting, we presented an update on the subcommittee work. And the subcommittee includes three councillors, Council Prior, Council Zalika, and Council Clark. And they've been thoughtfully reviewing all of the objective information as it pertains to the two site and the three options for City Hall. And one of the things that we learned in our discussion with you is that we thought it might be helpful to, sort of as background, to give you more information about the different options on the site, the conceptual options. And I do want to emphasize that those are conceptual at this point, based on potential that we see. We talk a lot about three good options, and that we will make one of them great. And I think today, Mike... And I think today, Mike Pennwell and Jason Dedrick will go over some reasons that might help provide better understanding about why all three are viable options to consider. This is an informational session, we won't be asking for you to make any decisions, but it's just that one of the pieces of information that we gave to you last week was a packet that included all of the criteria that we're using to evaluate, the subcommittee's using to evaluate the different options. And we thought that that, this information today will help you in evaluating this criteria and the assessment of it. Today we'll also talk a little bit about the timeline that we have proposed as we move forward. And I would suggest that, given that we're in a limited timeframe today, that we let Mike Pennwell and Jason Dedrick run through the presentation and save questions for the last and we'll do our best to make sure that we are thorough in getting responses to you. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike and Jason.
Can everybody hear me? Is this on? Oh. Oh, hold it close. I'm just saying to Jason, I need to be Shiva between the microphone, the pens, my glasses, the rest. What we really want to do is, as Christie mentioned, we've got the values grid and there's a written description of the three options, which is, can be interpreted very differently by everybody and even with the committee that spent more time diving into this and the staff. There's sort of different ways that we've all been looking at this. So we want to try to sort of establish what we know and what we don't know and just try to stick with an objective description, but do a little diagramming and talk about the options just to help everybody understand. As Christie said, these, all three options are really in concept form right now. They would all three need quite a bit of additional consultant time with space planning and architectural design and that sort of thing to really flesh out all the options and figure out the best way of doing all of this. But we'd really like you to use this grid to help you think through the different values and the different aspects of the options. So we're trying to put a little color behind the black and white description, so. First of all, I've tried to get this to the right point where it's close enough for you to see, but where it's not blocking the screen. Is it, is it all right?
Okay.
All right. First of all, I just wanted to quickly go over the consolidation priorities and just reconfirm that mayor, council and city manager's office is the top priority at 20,000 to 25,000 square feet. And then if possible, bring in financial services and central service administration for another 10,000 square feet. Now, the next chunk is 80,000 square feet and that obviously doesn't fit into any of the options, so I just want you to think about that. And then well down the road is the other pieces here, risk services, muni court, human resources, information services at about 45,000 square feet. Next. So again, looking at the square footage here and reminding that the current funding level that we've been talking about, 15 million supports about 25,000 square feet for both the City Hall options and up to 58,000 square feet for EWEB. But I just want you to notice that 58,000 ends up partway up that 80,000 square foot block, so it's unlikely that we would actually take the pull 58,000 square feet initially in the EWEB option because we don't want to create operational inefficiencies by splitting work groups. So I just wanted to note that. Next. Also wanted just to review the geographical realities that we're dealing with here and the current geographical distribution of city services all the way from municipal court in the lower level there at 11th and Lincoln, then the library and the atrium near each other and Woolworth, Public Works Engineering and Public Works Administration across the street from each other on Oak Street, City Hall, which is now empty of course, and EWEB up there. So it's just worth noting that our current geographic distribution is from muni court to City Hall, or you might think of library and atrium as a node to City Hall. And EWEB's about as far away from City Hall on the other side as the library and atrium are on the first side. So just pointing out that there would be some potential temporary disruption with more geographic distribution initially, but with the hope of eventual full consolidation at the EWEB site if that option were chosen. Obviously, the EWEB option, the north and south building up there are the anchors of the EWEB site and future development of the EWEB property with the river there and Alton Baker Park across the street. So I'll go over the EWEB option first. We're talking about the north building and a portion of the south building and the north building, we would have the second floor, the first floor would be a shared facility. It would need to be remodeled to suit our council chamber function and then it would be shared with the EWEB board in the, in the current thinking. The south building then is across the bridge and it's significant that the bridge connects at the second floor because that establishes some of the relationships that will set up within the building, so I wanted to point that out. And so part of the, part of our space would be in the north building on the second floor, part of it would be on, in the south building. Next slide, please. We've, you know, talked a lot about future expansion, whether it takes place within the existing south building. These highlighted areas show all the various places that are available for future expansion for both the city and EWEB. The current EWEB administration and meeting building are not big enough for full consolidation for city offices. And so regardless of what we did, whether we continued to share space in the EWEB, current EWEB building or not, there would be some construction for either of us or both of us most likely over time. Also wanted to talk real quickly about parking. Obviously, there's a lot of surface parking currently. As the site develops and the Riverfront District develops, we assume that a lot of that parking would be given over to higher and better uses. Structured parking would probably take place over time, but there's plenty of land there for lots of options, development options over time. While we leave that, I just wanted to highlight this in plan real quickly. We've got the north building and the administration building to the south with the bridge. This is a section cut through the building, so the, the north building is here with offices on the second floor, shared space on the first floor with the council chamber and board. This is, this is bridge, it's not occupied space, so don't think of it that way. The current EWEB offer that's on the table would, for 58,000 square feet, would include all of the second floor and about three quarters of the first floor. As I said, that's more than we could practically use initially because it would involve splitting up a current work group. So we might take all of the second floor, we might take a portion of the second floor, a portion of the first floor. You know, we probably want to have some kind of reception function on the first floor, but we would also want to be connected to our space across the bridge on the second floor. Obviously, there's a lot of work that would need to be done on that to figure out exactly what the layout would be and the, and the sharing.
Which one are we?
But that's, that's just one diagram to help you think about it. And yes.
I'm sorry, I was confused about the diagram. There's the red space, the space that the city would occupy in that building?
Yes, that's, that's right.
My understanding of fif, there's 80,000 square feet, so it's three quarters, but that doesn't look like three quarters. Why is that? That's if you took the whole 58,000, which we wouldn't do. We'd only take 25.
This represents about 35,000 square feet.
Okay, that's what I was.
For the, the, to meet, meet the diagram of mayor, council, city manager office plus finance and central services admin.
But what EWEB did offer was the entire second floor and two-thirds of the first floor of the, of the south.
Right. So the offer extends about like that, so that EWEB could keep some presence on the first floor reception, but they were willing to give up the entire second floor and the majority of the first floor.
Does that include council chambers?
Council chambers would be over here and, and yes, and that's, that's included. That's why I patched it both red and blue because we, it would be shared.
And that's for 15 million?
15 million would, we're using the, the current assumption that 58 million, 58,000 square feet would be included in the 15 million plus some remodel costs and a bit of land to go with that as well.
And so the only thing that would remain for them would be what shows up there is essentially the third and fourth floors and part of the first?
Part of the first, if we took the whole 58,000.
Correct.
The surface parking lots?
Surface parking lots would be shared in some unknown capacity or unknown arrangement at this point. There's also a parking lot across High Street, no, that's not High Street, it's.
Fourth?
Third Avenue, is that correct?
That's fourth?
Fourth Avenue, okay, thank you. So yeah, the surface lot up there that's also shared for staff and then for parking along the edge of the building.
Ownership would remain EWEB on that then?
We haven't identified exactly where the, the land that the city would, would control would be. We've talked about it in terms of roughly a quarter of a block so that it gives room for building area for a future addition. But I, I think one of the, what we know about this is that's the specific offer on the table. What we don't know is things change over time and, and so there would be negotiation and, and working with EWEB to take care of people's needs. Yeah, I'll go ahead and answer questions before I move off of EWEB, so yeah, Mike.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that I think that for the amount of money we're talking about, it gives us the capacity to look at the building space that we need and that we'd be able to get in this, the current facility plus be able to purchase the land necessary for our future expansion and parking. And that's obviously something to be discussed with EWEB and that's really where I wanted to focus, which is, this discussion is interesting because we haven't, we haven't declared our intent, but neither have they. So all things like this are still within the realm of possibility and discussion with them.
So how does the, how does the master, we haven't seen the master plan work yet, that's coming to council eventually. And that's quasi judicial proceeding, so we want to be careful about that. But we got a picture of, that was in our packet from EWEB.
Right.
How does the build out of the master plan impact the yellow areas? And secondarily, all the yellow areas would be potential for a expansion site, although the parking lot probably makes sense to keep as a parking lot because the other bottom part is vacant.
Right. Yeah, at least initially, certainly. Well, I won't pretend to be an expert on EWEB's master plan, however, the, the drawing that, that you're referring to there shows one possible manifestation of a build out of the master plan. The master plan will be used primarily to create planning and zoning areas that encourage certain types of growth and in most all of our planning, most all of our zones, government building is accepted use in those. And the master plan visualizes a great deal of mixed use development and so having government use or utility use in the midst of that is compatible with the master plan. It's more about creating density and activity. And so it's more of a value judgment about how much government or utility creates activity and so on.
So it's not so much that it would replace the master plan components, whatever the ultimate build out might be, it's more that it, it could be part of that as part of that mixed use?
Correct.
The Mitchley Building is, EWEB wants to keep that as part of their.
Right. Part of, part of the way they make room for us is to occupy the Mitchley Building, to occupy that administration building to the south of the south headquarters building. Yeah, that one there. And that's how they would free up some space in the existing south administration building for us.
What about that other building over there?
That one? That's, it's a.
Warehouse.
It's an old warehouse. It'd be a real challenge.
I meant the one next to it, that Jason.
Yeah, that's.
They would occupy that part?
A portion of that, I believe, was.
No?
No.
I think only the Mitchley Building.
Just Mitchley Building in south.
Okay. Glad we have some EWEB people here to set me straight.
But the old warehouse is just, is, is not that much of a structure, it's a basic open space under a quantum.
Anything more the subcommittee would like to add about the EWEB option? Let me get Claire's question room.
Well, I don't know if this can be answered, but part of my, the reason I'm interested in the EWEB site is its potential to create a civic space right there along the river and, you know, be kind of a gateway to the city and the river and Alton Baker Park. So I'm wondering if we did move in there, if we would have some role in helping with that vision and that creation as the city.
I would say that falls into the unknown category rather than the known.
So I'll just express my desire that if we went with this option, that that would be part of, of the arrangement.
That is a known.
Mike.
Thank you. I got involved in what she was saying and forgot.
It wasn't that, I did so much.
I hate it when that happens. Oh, I've got it. The interesting thing here is, we spent at the subcommittee level a good deal of time having a discussion about our workshop that we'll conduct at a future point, but I just want to point out that all of our discussions here so far have been about site choice. We had quite a discussion about whether this whole process is a site decision or a building decision. And I'd like to say that, just to point out that we're having quite a bit of good discussion, I think, about the fact that it's a site choice.
So, three points. One is that it would be kind of like a condo ownership. We would share ownership of the building, so that, we would control our part of it jointly, what we would do with that, that space with the EWEB board, so it'd be, we'd have to agree, but it would, it would allow us ownership rights. Secondarily. It is, to me, the distinction between a site and a building overlaps so much that they, I'm not sure it's that valid of a distinction or helpful of a distinction because what you want out of a City Hall and what you want it to look like and how you want it to operate, every one of these three options is, is different in that regard. So, you know, then they all have constraints about that, so they, and they all require you to build another building if you want to do full consolidation. And so, you know, some of the constraints on this one, and I'll put the other ones out when we get to them, but on this one, for instance, you're, you're confined to the south building and that's where our City Hall would be and we'd share it with EWEB like we're doing here with the county. And, and then our office space would be probably on the second floor of that building plus second floor of the other building. So that, you know, the building's already there. What you build new could be completely different, but you have the constraints and limitations that exist.
In that respect, I think this is the easiest option to visualize in the future too, obviously, because I wouldn't foresee the exterior envelope of the building changing anytime soon of how you divide up the space and remodel it.
And when we get to the next two options, the constraints will be, tearing down and build new has no constraints in the, in the one.
And we probably need to get to the next two options or we won't get to them. Right, so Chris, and then let's go.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll try to go quickly. Since Alan brought it up, the metaphor I've been using is the one that we see every time we watch Home and Garden Channel when somebody needs to go and buy a new home. We're the family, we want to buy a new home and we're being shown a couple different options. One is a fixer-upper, that's current location where we tear it down and fix it up. The second one is where we build a completely new house. And the third option is where we buy a home that's move-in ready, but it's not quite got everything we were looking for. And like a family, we have to decide what we want. And I agree, a lot of times a real estate agent will first say, where do you want to live? Location, location, location. But oftentimes when you watch those shows, they don't always necessarily buy the home that's in the location they want because there's certain elements of the home they want. So it is a site and a building mushed together. What we have to do as a family is decide what are the most compelling features of that home and location that, that we're looking for. How big is, how big is that house going to be? What kind of things do we think we're going to need in the future as we grow into it? Is there expansion capability? I mean, these are very dynamic elements, so there are, what we're getting today are the kind of hard facts the real estate agent would give you about the options, but we also need to say which one we're most comfortable with in terms of what we ultimately want that house to be. And that's been what's making it so interesting.
All right, let's finish the options.
So many ways.
Councillors of Eugene. Can I talk about the new concept? This is probably the easiest one to understand conceptually. I mean, it's. I mean, it's.
I was wondering why he thought.
Build it now.
Kind of the way we've been thinking about it, you know, Otto Potisha did a fairly particular conceptual idea, not really a design, but it contains many of the elements we've been talking about. And then Raul Broca did the new site and again, some of the concepts and in all of them, there's been some kind of a plaza element probably in this location because it relates to the most active streets with Pearl and Eighth and everything that's going on there. And then that gives pretty much the option to do a new building with a north-south orientation or an east-west orientation, leaving the rest of the site to do whatever you want to, partnering with a developer, future expansion, whatever you can imagine and think up. That's a great, big unknown, obviously, and a process would need to be designed to figure all that out. Up above is from the Raul Broca report that shows one concept for how a fairly low-scale city hall would occupy the site and leave room for, again, future expansion or concurrent development by someone else. To think about the red piece, which would be the phase-one city hall, it's roughly the footprint of the Woolworth Building, but only two or three stories instead of five or six stories. Initially, wouldn't necessarily increase density on the site and that would depend on what came later or what came concurrently next month. This is the north-south orientation showing a little larger park instead of a plaza, but it's basically the same concept. You take part of the space with the new city hall and then you have additional space for either future or concurrent expansion with other uses. Now, both of those, we're showing the half-block across the street too because that goes with this site and is one way to think about it and whether that becomes, as Raul Broca implied here, some kind of mixed-use development or residential or if it retains and stays in city ownership for a possible future expansion for future phases of city hall. Just, again, we're getting into the unknowns, but want you to consider, you know, what's there currently. And then the block kitty-corner from city hall that Justina and others have developed over time, which is a development site that's waiting too. So you can think of this as kind of a district that could be developed in some way. And certainly both the E-Web option and the new city hall option give more flexibility and opportunity for development in this particular district. I think that's fair to say without getting into opinion too much. Let's go to the remodel option. Again, this was Otto Potisha's sort of concept drawing and I just wanted to use this diagram to talk about how that came about. Again, it, first of all, I just want to say that the options that we're considering for the current city hall site are in a fairly narrow spectrum from a major rebuild to new. But the spectrum of possibilities would go clear over to some kind of a historic renovation. And I just want to point out that we're not talking about that and nobody in the community that I've talked to is talking about that either. That even those that are in favor of keeping the existing city hall know that it can't be a historic remodel. It's got to be a major rebuild, that we got to tear it down, the structure, we have to seismically reinforce it, we have to make the building envelope energy efficient. So there's, this is kind of the narrow range that we're looking in. So to get to the rebuild option, the way you accomplish that in Otto Potisha's design and the way that many of us have been thinking about it is you do some selective demolition to, again, create some sort of a plaza, courtyard, park element, something that addresses this part of the site. It puts it on street level, which, again, fixes some of the things that are wrong with the building, mainly that it's lifted six feet up off the street and kind of kills the street light and so disconnects it back to the street, it opens it up to south light, it opens it up to views from the more active parts of the community. And then it looks at remodeling and renovating thoroughly the east wing and occupying that. Otto Potisha also had some new construction to the west there. I would say that we might use more of the existing space to shell or to finish and then it also leaves some shelved space. I would also like to point out that what Otto's plan sort of ignored is that the fire station isn't really practical to keep, in my opinion, because the floors don't line up. You've got the floor dropped down, the second floor is raised above the plaza level, there's only seven feet of ceiling space up there, so we might think of the fire station as going away. That leaves a very small piece up the west wing that is probably not worth remodeling. And then what I think that it's important to note about this particular option that really hasn't been underlined very much is that this could leave the possibility of a new office tower here that's as big as the new building in phase-one of the new option. That could be, that could be the Woolworth Building right there in that perfect scale and size and so on. So in all three options, I wanted to point out that you can fit the future consolidated city hall onto the site and the differences are, I think we articulated in between E-Web and the rebuild is that you're using some existing space. This is a major tear-down and rebuild down to the structure, this is a blank slate, it's all new. I also wanted to point out that in the new, the 15 million doesn't buy you any parking, so you have to think about the half-block across the street as parking, at least in the interim. And over time, you need to think of the parking as being in the mix of all of that end of downtown, just as you do with parking throughout the downtown typically. This would retain 90 to 100 parking spaces underneath initially, which could be retained over time or utilized some other way. And again, think of the half-block across the street. So I think I've covered all the pieces. Are there any questions or anything the committee wants to add, first of all, subcommittee?
The city council chambers in that third option stays the way it is today. It might be, you know, we might enhance it, but.
Including the beautiful mural, Mike.
You'd have to duke it out with Neil over that.
Let's go. I can give you all kinds of flexibility. To that point too, the outside of this would look totally different, I mean, because it's we're tearing, so don't think of the rotting wood fins.
Thank you.
Can you go up a second story on that?
It would be very impractical to do that on the existing space because the footings aren't big enough for overturn for lateral loads.
I just want to be clear in the world, in the area of constraints that we've been talking about, when you're talking about the footprint of that square block having the capacity for the phase-two future expansion, the cost of doing so is significant when you're talking about the recreation of footing and it's not something that we can do in phase-one at all with either plan.
Right.
We would not be able to do the kind of, well, we can always add to this building later because the amount of construction required for those first couple of floors would be too significant for the money we have. So I just want to make sure we're talking about the constraints even.
Yeah, whatever size this future piece is, you would want to build it all at once, at least vertically, and it's probably not big enough to practically cut it in half horizontally. And so it's probably a one-shot deal for adding that in the future.
We've got Betty and then we've got George.
My question was just about keeping the council chamber, that's been answered, thank you.
Oh, I, yeah, I just want to say I really like this, I believe this is a new idea, what you just outlined on that bottom right diagram. I don't recall submitting the material from last time.
No, that's correct, it's.
I think that's a really terrific.
Exploring how we could add more capacity for full consolidation on the current site with all three up.
And you're saying on the north, the north part, that we would save or shell perhaps?
Right.
That's not practical to go up, to go vertically up from there?
Correct.
I see, I was under that misapprehension, I guess, heard that somewhere.
It wasn't built for that.
Okay, I thought I heard just the opposite.
Actually, it was built for that, but the codes have changed so much that.
Frank no longer.
No, I think that's a great idea. You're right, the fire station is not, it's kind of hard to see how to use that space and that, I like that idea a lot, it's going vertically, that's like what most cities do.
So I guess for me, I know we're not into the detail of what a building would be yet, you're just sort of talking about the basic outline kind of things. But I, the part that I still wonder about, in one sense, in spite of all the opportunities there are with the E-Web building, you're dealing with a structure that was built for a certain kind of office space and then, so I, I wish we would think not only the, so to speak, the departments that we're trying to move together, but we could, each of you out there would be thinking in the most modern term about what your needs are and how you would be working across jurisdictions in a, in a sort of the new working mode and that somehow you could bring that thinking in just before we either in a new building, an older building, build something that's a monument to the past instead of to the future. So I'm really concerned about whether we build something that is really on the front edge of where we're going as opposed to where we've been and so, any choice, I wish we would think about those things.
Go ahead, Mike.
I was just going to say, you've spoken about that at several meetings and I think that's a really important factor and it has a lot to do with space planning. I think the, you know, it's my business to stay up on all this stuff and so I've studied how the dot-coms have done it, they're the ones that are kind of out on the edge in creating collaborative space and multipurpose space. And I think any of the options could support that. E-Web's a great building, it's got an open floor plan, it can easily be designed for collaborative space and with all the systems, furniture now and movable partitions and so on, we would never do a city hall again with, you know, stud and drywall walls everywhere and then we're remodeling them and tearing them down and moving them over five feet every two years. Crazy. So it's definitely possible in all three of these options to create collaborative, creative space that encourages interaction among staff and staff with public as well. I don't know if we had the first.
Chris and then Alan.
Yeah, we've actually talked about the mayor's point because I do think it is important to think about what does the future of work look like and I think that is a very important consideration. You may not need certain work teams working the same way they're working now and that will affect their space. What's really nice about this presentation is the opportunity to see that apart from the values discussion, there is a very physical set of trade-offs that we have to consider. That each one of these options has both advantages and disadvantages in terms of the physical trade-offs. You can get into an existing space relatively inexpensively, but it doesn't have the flexibility naturally that you have when you build something brand-new. That way you can build whatever you want. But when you build whatever you want, you're having to start at the very ground level until you can only get a certain amount of square footage. That's a real consideration. If you go with the existing space and you tear it down to just the columns, what do you have when you're done? Do you really have the most cost-effective and economical construction? Because as Alan's pointed out and as I have seen myself, when you go in to renovate something, you always hit surprises that you never knew you were going to hit. And sometimes they can be very expensive surprises, that doesn't mean it's not a viable option, but don't go into this expecting it's going to be your most cost-effective option. It often is not your most cost-effective option, but it may have other advantages. It was important to see this so that we could talk on the same plane about what those trade-offs are. Because if I think of the trade-offs based on what I think these three options are and Mike talks about the trade-offs based on what he thinks the three options are, we're not going to have a very good conversation. So we thought it was important for you to see physically what we're talking about so that when we start talking trade-offs, we know in actual terms what we're trading off here. And so I think from that standpoint, this has been very helpful.
Alan?
Yeah, so what the subcommittee is trying to, we're not coming to you with a recommendation at all, we're just trying to get to the objective things about it, so we wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page. The next part of this is actually where we come back and we talk about the values and what we want out of a city hall and how, and this matrix about the different kinds of values that we have, how that fits for each of these options, what their preferences would be. I have a question for the council, is anybody else besides myself interested in having the consolidation, meaning PDD and the PIC and Public Works Engineering Administration included now as opposed to where we've been currently? That would involve coming up with about another $30 million from the get-go as more than the 15 million as opposed to waiting and phasing that? I'm interested as, in maybe moving that to now as opposed to having that be a five, 10 years from now kind of conversation. So I think we'd lose a lot of momentum, but is anybody else interested in that or am I the only one who thinks that that's a good idea?
I do, I do, oh, go ahead.
And then so, two other points there. One other interesting thing about this is, and we haven't talked about it much, is that when you, the energy and operating cost of a building, not including the debt service and what it costs to buy it, 85% of the energy use of a building is in its occupancy or that cost of running a building is in its occupancy. Very little of it is actually in the building or the demolition part of it, very small part of that is related to that. So it's mostly about how you occupy the building. And a new building is much, would be very much more energy-efficient than a remodeled building or an E-Web building. From an energy perspective, there's a clear which one's the best, that it's a new building than a rebuilt building than an E-Web building and that's real important to me. Of course, new maybe costs more. And then the other thing that Chris wanted to point out is I've done several remodels of my own house and never were those, did those projects come out the way that I thought. As soon as we started pulling apart the house, man, all of a sudden, costs just started going out the roof. This happened, that happened and, you know, the first time we did it, it almost doubled our budget. And so to think of the remodel as the cheapest alternative is probably not correct. That's always an interesting thing, so that's all I. I'm interested in that question I asked about crazy.
Just real quick, I wanted to respond to basically what is a sustainability question and that's value-based as well. I would like to point out that it's true that an east-west oriented, brand-new city hall that's oriented properly, you can do the envelope, the mechanical and electrical, but the advantage of E-Web and rebuild are the embodied energy and reuse of existing. And I've read studies that it can take decades to offset the energy embodied in existing buildings with the operation. And so again, I think that's somewhat of a values discussion, even though you can quantify both, there are trade-offs there as well.
Mayor, thank you. I just know we're running out of time and so if it would be okay if we could just transition to the timeline and we'll make sure that we're going to have a lot more time to talk about questions with respect to the different concepts and the design options and all of those kinds of things. And so we know this is a very, very quick overview of some pretty detailed information and we could come back to that at the workshop that we're going to try to schedule the first part of December. So today's the 21st and we're planning to schedule a workshop sometime the first week of December and we're trying to find time where every single counselor is available to attend. Yeah, right, exactly, so it'd probably be a little bit after that. Counselor Clark?
I just want to say to the electronic information that we're all going to be asked, the homework we're going to be asked to do is a very important part of that, I wanted to make sure we were.
Okay.
Mr. Segway.
Yeah, thank you. So part of preparation for the workshop, we were going to get some more insights into your opinions about the different values that we'll be applying to the decision-making criteria and so you'll be receiving something from us prior to that workshop. The other option that we have is to schedule a drop-in session for community members to give feedback on the three different options, do an overview. give feedback on the three different options, do an overview to provide you some more input that might help your decision-making. We, one date that we have available for that is December 4th, and so we'd be looking for a little bit maybe of direction or some head nodding, if you think that's a good idea, go ahead and continue to plan that. The other opportunity for public input would be December 10th, and we could do a public forum at your planned council session. And then the 12th is still the tentative date that would be available if you so chose to make a decision on that date and felt you had enough information to do so. We're still working on that timeline, but we would, that's flexible based on where you all are at.
I have to leave, but December 4th, I won't be here.
It's a public, not for us.
Right, it's a public forum, drop-in type session.
Okay, but I think, I like the idea of the public forum on the 10th.
Yeah, we'd do that as well.
It'd be in addition.
Okay. So we're going to wrap it up right now, we're out of time, thank you. Do you need anything else, Christie?
No, but if you could send me your thoughts, if there's any other questions...
Anybody disagree with that fourth public forum?
Your homework on this stuff.
I guess my, two quick things is, I don't, I know we spent a lot of money over time over the city hall discussion, and so we're aware of that and cautious about that. On the other hand, I don't know when it becomes important to really do a real survey and find out where, if you go to the notion of a full, you're going to go out to the public for money, then I think you're going to have to know where the public is to make that decision. And the other piece that I just wanted to bring up is, that's kind of in the values, but maybe not. I just, I've always, and we've talked about this many times, I have just always thought if you're going to ask for an investment from the public in this building, other than the money that we already have, then you have to take the leap of figuring out what they need to have in it that makes it worthwhile to them as a community, that they would take that leap. And so those are just in reference to what Alan brought up in the conversation, I just think you need to think about that. And we've had a lot of conversations about things like farmers' markets, and we'd love to have the butterfly, access to the butterfly property and all that, but the possibility of a council on the current council, I mean, city hall on the current city hall site, does give you the possibility of doing some of the things that you want to do downtown and make that part of that, so that you're not only creating a better working space for the people here and a better meeting space, public meeting space, but you're also putting something in it that is of value to the community. So just for you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good.
No, you missed it.